Good morning, everybody. Can everyone hear me? This is Chris Watson in the boardroom.
I can hear you, Chris. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you perfectly, Elsie. So just to let everyone know, we are live, but we are still waiting on a handful of people to come to the meeting. So as we get closer, we'll begin the meeting. But I believe we're still waiting on Sue and a couple other United Board members.
Thank you, Chris. I'm pretty sure Riza's gonna be here, and I know Sue will be. And anyway, good morning, and good morning to you, Betty and Dick and Carl and Brian and Manny.
Yeah, was it Betty and Carl?
Not a yes, but I can't hear any of you.
You can't hear me, Betty?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
I just texted Sue. You can hear. I just texted Sue the link. Oh, there's Sue. Sue, I can't hear anything yet, so just give me a minute to try to figure out why I have nothing on.
And you called Riza. I'll call Netto because I gave him the wrong code.
I don't have Riza's phone number.
Okay, do you have Netto's?
Uh, no, I don't keep it in. I only have your phone.
I'll call Riza, Sue. He doesn't answer. I'll call Riza, okay?
Okay, give him the correct code because I gave him the wrong code. I'll send it. I'll send the right code meanwhile. Brian, too.
Hello, Riza? I'm gonna give you the right code. I'm gonna give you the right code to sign in. Somebody told me you got the wrong one. It's a bit of a...
I was sending the link.
Okay, the call for today's meeting, financial meeting at 12 o'clock, okay? Are you ready?
I just sent him the link.
Because we're all on there.
It's my fault.
Hello, hello, everyone. I'm in finally.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll do it all over again. Okay, 912. Okay. 605. Five, yeah. Okay, 605. Sign in, okay. Five, yeah.
I'm sorry, I gave everybody the wrong code. I kept looking for...
Oh, Riza.
Your entry is not valid.
So far, okay? He should be...
We got it. We got it from Chris, okay? And everybody had that same email, so I mean, don't take the blame. They've got that information from Chris.
All right, we've got it. Betty, can you hear us now? Well, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. It's an open meeting of the Board of Directors of Laguna Woods Mutual of California Nonprofit Mutual Benefits.
Please enter your access code. The access code you entered is invalid. You entered 91258605. Please re-enter your access code, followed by the pound or hash sign. To enable audio control.
I see number three has approved the agenda. Did we do that?
Yeah, we're going to... Right now, we're gonna approve the agenda. I'm gonna ask for a resolution to approve the agenda.
I saw most.
Is there a second? Riza seconded. Carl seconded. We're done with that? Okay. I've asked Betty to address two questions for us. No, five questions, and I'm hoping that we'll be able to get some of these answers. One of the questions I have is, what will our insurance costs that were not budgeted included in the money that we need to be paid to Bleacher Carlson in October? So we need that number so we know how much money we have to spend this year, not next year's budget. How much over our budget figure is our insurance next year that we will need to fund? She keeps telling us that we have $700,000. She says that's in savings and operating costs, but we see $5 million. I guess most of that is in reserve, and we need to figure out what we're going to do. And the... What we've got Ernesto on is, is what is the estimate savings from COVID? We need to estimate the cost of some programs that start in October that come out of our reserve. How much will we spend out of reserve? Looking at the project log, which projects will be invoiced for? And what will the run rate be for October, November, and December in the budget? So these are some of the things that I think we should discuss today. I'm not sure. Is Betty on yet? Chris, is Betty on?
Hey, Sue. She's coming back on right now. She's resetting her computer.
No, she wasn't.
Sue, this is Ernesto. I can go ahead and address the questions that you had. For me, so we can... While we're waiting for Betty. As you know, the servers are down, so I don't have access to any information right now. So I'm working off of copies that I have of project logs and the last recollection of where the budgets were at. So your first question was, what are the estimated savings from COVID? I would say that a rough figure, it's about $4 million. We currently have... We're currently about 4.5, 4.4 million under budget year-to-date as of, I believe, the last reports that we received.
Is that reserved? That's reserved, right?
That's reserved. That's correct. So we're looking... We're anticipating that there's several of your programs, that most of your programs, in fact, will be taking them to completion. So we'll be completing all that work. For example, impaving, roof replacements. So all of that will be completed. When we take these items out of the calculation, we're currently spending about $3.5 million under budget each month in reserves. So this means that the budget will be about another million. There'll be about another million in savings this year. But then, remember that the damage restoration will be over budgeted from $500 to $1 million, depending on what the rains did to us this winter. So the short answer to your question was about $4 million in savings. The second question you had was how much will we spend out of reserves? A very rough estimate is that we'll be spending about $6.5 million. And remember, out of a total budget of about $11.5 million. So approximately, we'll come in approximately about $5 million under budget. You know? And I want to preface all of this by saying that these are very rough figures. I don't have access to anything right now. The other question you had, Sue, was which projects will be invoiced for? What I would do is just, you know, from, let's see, building structures, it's really a contingency fund, if you would. I would say we have a balance in there of about $100 and some thousand dollars. I think that that would be spent if we have tickets that we're addressing. On a typical year, I would say that we will burn through that 100-plus, $100,000 plus that we have left in there. You recall the sex signs will be fully invoiced. It's... We had a balance of about $50,000, I recall, in there. And we're gonna be able to... We completed that work for you, so... And we have not received those invoices yet, so we'll be spending that money. The Pushmatic work, let's see, we had about, oh, I'd say about $300,000 balance in there. I believe that that work, let's see... We were contacting residents, if you may recall. You directed us to see if there were any residents who were texting to us entering their units. So it's really hard to say how much of that we're gonna be spending, Sue, because we've reduced some of that program for those units where the residents did not want us to go in. So it's really hard to tell them how much is left to be invoiced. The walkway lighting program, we have a balance of about $40,000. I don't anticipate we're gonna spend all of that, so there'll be some money left in there. Let's see. Some of the big ones, the exterior paint program, that program is moving forward. We're continuing to paint. So I would say that... I think we were about a million, a little bit, about $1,300,000 or so when we left off, last time I looked at it. So that, we're probably gonna burn through that. The same with the prior to paint. Let's see. Parkway, like I said, Parkway concrete, your asphalt work, your seal coat work, all of that is gonna be invoiced. We completed those programs for you, and those are usually budgeted pretty... We can actually determine how much money we can... We need for that. So I would say that we'll burn through that. The same with the roofing program. We will be probably invoicing all of those funds. The Shepherd's Crooks, remember you took some of the funding out of there? You took about $125,000 in funding out of there, so we have a balance of about $40,000, and we're gonna be doing some work with that. The epoxy wastelinings, we had a balance of about, last time I checked, about $1,500,000 or so. We are still, let's see... You directed us to move forward with the project, provided the shareholders were in agreement with us entering their units. So it's difficult for me to tell you where we're gonna land with that because I don't have the records as to how many we will be able to do. Let's see. The foundation program, if you may recall, you canceled that. There's about $23,000 left in there. And the same with the waterline programs, and there was about, I like to say, about a $60,000 balance in that. So that kind of gives you a rundown of where we're at with that. So those are the programs that I anticipate getting invoices for. And then, let's see, your last question was related to, what is the run rate for October, November, December, you know, as opposed to the budget? We're spending about half a million dollars in reserves, and that's not including the stuff that we... That will be invoiced 100%, like the roofs, the pages, and all of that. So, let's see. I would say that... I would say that we... That would create a run rate of about 600 and... 660,000. I would say about a $1.3 million total per month against a $17.3 million budget, creating about a $4 million saving. That's how we arrived at the $4 million saving in your question number one. So hopefully, that gives you a little bit of information. Like I said, I don't have files and, you know, reports to go by because I have no access whatsoever to my records.
Okay, thank you. Carl, you have a question?
I had a comment with regard to what Ernesto said. Just wanted to remind everybody, okay? While we talk about the fact that we have all of this money available to us because of the fact that we didn't do this work and didn't do that work, many of those activities are multi-year activities, like the issue with the waistline remediation, the fact that the panels, the panels that need to be replaced and what have you, okay? And while we did not spend that money this year because people wouldn't allow us into their homes, okay? That money is still on the docket to be spent, okay? Because of the fact that this work still needs to get done. So that money is not money that we can say, well, it could be deferred to something else. That money is still in there to be used for those particular long-term projects. And the other thing right now is the fact that we have to remember what's invoiced versus what we're committed to, okay? And the commitment right now is the fact that some of these contracts have been completed. We still have not received an invoice for it, but we still owe these people money. So that money is not on the table to be used for something else. That money is still there to pay those bills when they finally come in. So there's two different issues here. So we need to be very careful about the fact that when we say we have money on the table, we really don't in many instances. That's all I want to say.
Okay, Andre?
Yes, I have the same question that Carl was asking. I'm surprised that our invoice payment is cash-based rather than accrued, which caused the term that's committed. I don't understand why we, on the invoice side, we use cash-based instead of accrued. Accrued means we will pay. Okay, it's already committed. We will pay. So those money are out of the loop, out of the consideration. Only in cash-based, we still have them in the bank. Okay, but that's not what we can spend anymore. Okay? So those numbers should be... The invoice payment should be accrued. I don't understand why it's cash-based. And another issue would be the... You mentioned a lot of work that are delayed. So my question is, what about a catch-up work? Do we need... Do you need extra resources requirement to finish them? Or do you use the current resources and then delay the total final completion date of some of the projects? What kind of resource do you need? Do you have the resource? Do you have the budget for those resources already earmarked? Or do you see that they will be... They will not be used? May I ask that question? Thank you.
Go ahead, Ernesto.
Good, thank you. So the first question is related to accrual versus cash. What I'm speaking from is the project log. The project log is just a photograph of where we're at relative to our invoices. So the budget was appropriated, and we don't anticipate in any given year going over that budgeted amount. Now, what I'm speaking of is relative to those projects and programs, I will not close them until we get all the invoices for those programs. So I'm strictly referring to the invoices that we've received. We do have an accrual system, obviously, but relative to the information that I provide to you through the project log, that's just reflective of the latest invoices that we have received and we have processed for account payables. And that's what I'm talking about. Now, relative to catching up, no, Carl knows, we're not going to catch up with anything. We are moving forward from where we were. So there is no additional staffing or effort that will be required. We're just gonna pick up on our schedules right where we left off. So hopefully, that helps with that question.
Okay, and Manny, the last question?
I have a question and some comments. First of all, every company that I ever worked for, especially when you have tight closings, you use what is called a modified cash basis. And that means every liability that you know of, you record every single month. But you have a tight closing here, it's just like other places that have to crank out reports on a timely basis. Okay, so it's not cash. It's modified cash. Then when you do the audit, you make sure you record every liability you're aware of. And as you go on during the year, a lot of your liabilities are recorded through accounts payable, so it's not cash basis. Okay, Andre? So as far as accounting and so on, I'm confident that that's being taken care of all right, okay? And that doesn't mean that changes my opinion on processing. That's just recording of what is processed, it's done as tight as you can do it right now. Then as far as the budget and all that, I think there's a couple things that directors and everybody else don't understand about the financial statements. And I'll explain it again. This financial statement is based both on operating results as well as capital expenditures that we go through reserves, okay? And through the August statement, which is the latest one we have available, it shows that we had excess of revenues over expenditures of $4.1 million. Most of that was reserves. $3.9 million of that was underspent money in reserves. And to answer Carl, it's just like the last two to three years, I've shown that we've spent reserve contributions by $6 million. This year, we're gonna underspend it by $4 million, and that's what makes it might be fine. And the best way I can explain that is that when you look at the financial statements, okay? Through August, we had projected, we had budgeted a loss, okay? So rush, and the loss was $1,300,000. And the primary reason we are having losses in these years, it's like we did last year, is because our reserve expenditures are in excess of our assessments. If you look at your 2020 business book, you'll see that in there. The expenditure for reserves, about $1.5 million more than the income. Same thing with contingency. It's about another $400,000 or $500,000. So that's where your $1.9 million loss for this year will come from. There's only one experience that I've seen in the last three years where you actually ended up having to come back and spend more money because that was with water years. If you recall, they got a couple of years behind, and then they came to the board and asked to authorize initially, I think $1.3 million, to catch up with that program. So as far as next...
Manny, please get to the point. This is...
My point is we're gonna have a big surplus at the end of this year. That's my point, okay? And you guys don't read the numbers. You don't understand them, okay?
Thank you.
We're in good shape.
We're in good shape, but we need to figure out what it is going on. Okay, Beck, can you talk now, Betty?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right. Sorry about that. I had to reboot everything. Too many computers, which is today. Okay, so what I wanted to talk about is insurance. Are you ready for that?
Yep.
Okay, Chris, if you will let me screen share.
For matter of precedence, this is Ernesto. Do you have any additional questions for me?
No, you can go to work.
Okay, thank you, Sue. Have a good day.
And following up on Ernesto's comments, I would just say that of the projected surplus, we're anticipating $700,000 of that in operating, but I'll get back to that in just a minute. All right, we wanted to give you an update on the insurance, the cost of insurance compared to your budget. That's the primary reason for this meeting. And so if you can see, hopefully, on this schedule, the schedule of payments here for property, casualty, executive liability, and the broker fees. So this column right here, the payment schedule is the total of the insurance lines that just renewed. And let me just shade that so you can look like a total there, okay? And so we're showing installment due date. This visually is showing you how much we're paying in October as of the renewal date, November, December, and then the remaining nine months next year for the policy period. And so you can see that much of your insurance costs are front-loaded due at the time of renewal, and just a portion of the casualty is spread out. Of course, as mentioned, we do use accrued, modified accrual-based accounting. Insurance is one of those things that we do accrue in addition to payroll and legal fees and utilities. But so this is how you're going to see the expense come through your operations. So this amortized expense column is the amount you're gonna see on your income statement each month as an expense. So we've compared that to budget for you. And so the required funding, the amount that exceeds the budget for the last three months of this year is $600,000. And then just small amounts next year for a total of about $670,000 more than what we've included in the budget. And so although the projected surplus this year from the shutdown is in the millions of dollars, that's all reserve programs. And that money just sits in reserve. It doesn't come out of reserve until you spend it. And so that money... And so that money remains in reserve for your roofs and asphalt when those are competing, when that, when those programs occur. But what we care about in relation to insurance is the operating surplus. So we do, we do anticipate an operating surplus of $700,000. And if I mix that up and got that number wrong, Jose's going to jump in and correct me. Because we are working with three corporations at the time. I want to, I don't have a document on the surplus projection in front of me. And so your surplus in operating is sufficient to cover this unanticipated expenditure for insurance, $600,000. On the cash side of it, the cash side of it is here in green, but that's not really relevant to our discussion today. Then I'll remind you, in the budget, we assumed a $700,000 operating surplus. And you decided to contribute $300,000 of that surplus to reserve and $400,000 of that surplus to contingency fund. And so my recommendation today is that you leave the operating surplus in operations where we're going to pay for the insurance, so that we don't have to do supplementals and transfers and all that. So you have an operating surplus sufficient to cover the additional insurance costs and not transfer that money to contingency fund. Clearly, you need some funding in your contingency fund. So our recommendation today is to reduce your contribution to the reserve fund by $10 per annum per month, so equivalent of about $750,000, and move that $10 to the contingency fund. Or leave it as a savings to your members, but run the risk of this ending balance coming down below a million dollars in the contingency fund. And with your size of operation, we don't necessarily feel comfortable with that. And we can, we can take directive and move these parts around. As long as we're only dealing with reserve contributions today, then we can revise the budget resolution and make that change for you. We can't change any planned expenditures. So as Manny mentioned in your earlier conversation with Ernesto, just not all those expenditures are going to happen this year. But that money stays in reserve until those programs are, that program work is completed. We don't need to transfer, we don't need to reduce or anything like that. So that money will be there in reserve, available for the completion of the program. And so I'll take questions and kind of let you guide the discussion at this point.
Okay, Carl, go ahead.
Oh, my question is, okay, I understand your point about the fact of not doing anything with putting that money into contingency, keeping the operating fund, and that could be used for the $670,000 that's required for the payments to the premiums. My question, however, is the fact if we take the money from out of reserves for 2021, then that reduces the amount of money we have for the programs that are supposed to be done in 2021. And as a result of that, that's $750,000 or whatever the heck, it's $600 and something thousand dollars that we have less in reserves for next year. So how can we reconcile that?
Right, so your reserve plan right now, you can see on this screen, shows that you're projected to be 40% funded, going down to 20% over the next few years. So you do hit this, this red area that puts you at a higher risk for special assessment. But we know that your reserves are very large and not like a typical association. And so you don't look at just your percent funded. You also look at how much money you have in reserve, your, your fund balance. And you've decided as a board that you think your reserve balance is above $10 million, which has been adjusted for inflation, right? So I think you're at about $10.6 million right now. And as your threshold, and so this reserve plan assumes that you won't drop below the $10.6 million, the one that you adopted in September. And so if I go over this other sheet, these are the first five years of those numbers where you get down to this $10.8 million balance. And we looked at a couple of different things. What if you reduce your reserve contribution by $20 and $10? And as you know, we have a network outage, so we don't have access to our files. We just created this, and so we were only able to go out five years in time for this meeting because we've not talked to the reserve specialist who generated these numbers. But we just did a what-if. What if we reduce those fund debt balances by this $10 per annum per month decrease? So you're going to hit the red one year earlier, below 30% in 2022, based on these projections. And you would fall below that $10.6 million, but you're still above $10 million. So that's why I'm comfortable with a $10 decrease. We could set your threshold at $10 million instead of 10.6. But the $20 per annum per month decrease brought me down closer to $9 million. And so I was more comfortable with the $10 million mark. And so that's why I'm recommending the $10 decrease.
Okay, a follow-up to that, Betty, just as a, no disrespect intended, okay? But what you're telling me right now is that you, not us as the board, but you are also behind this change that we will make. Because later on, I hear things from you saying, you as a board decided to do this. And I'm going to say, we as an entity decided to do this. Is that correct?
I'm making a recommendation that is a little different than what I've been hearing from the board. I'm recommending a $10 decrease in your contribution to reserve. But I do think you should redirect that money to your contingency fund. You, I, I feel you're, you're too low in your contingency fund balance. If we don't move $400,000 from operating surplus to the contingency fund, then you're going to be at or below a million dollars, putting out expenditures though. And if you're fine leaving this at a million dollars, and as you know, we've moved the, the moisture intrusion out of this for next year. So we're no longer going to be paying for dry down or restoration costs out of here. So you can see that nothing's going to be spent out of your contingency fund unless you appropriate it as a special project from the board. But things come up all year long, unexpected things, that are not planned for in your operating budget. So you might be comfortable going down to a million dollars or $900,000 in this balance and take the $10 reduction in reserve to your bottom line. And so that, that part is up to you, Carl. My recommendation on it is move that $10 over to contingency.
I, I believe that we should, should enhance our contingency fund because it's been at all-time low. I believe you and I agree with you. I just wanted to make sure that I'm not going to be told later on, somebody saying, well, you guys decided. No, we're basically, I'm going along with your recommendation, okay? And you're in this with us together, okay? And that's the same thing with the pandemic. Thank you.
Okay, Andre?
Yes, well, Carl asked quite a few questions I was going to ask. Like, so I understand what's the impact, you know? We tried to move $10 of reserve fund to contingency fund. And you explained what's the impact. Now, my question is, what is the future plan? And any alternative analysis as far as contribution to, the impact of contribution to contingency fund? Why we don't use that? And also, what's the impact to reserve plan? And I also noticed that in your description of the contingency fund, you missed a write-off. It has three purposes. The write-off, the disaster, contingency, and the write-off. Somehow the write-off is missing there. So I'm not sure what's happening there, okay? And also, the second question I have is the reserve fund is too much detail, okay? At the, at the unit level or different structure level, can we summarize it into categories? Okay, like the old one? There's too much detail. It's just, I cannot read it at all. I need a summary level and comparison each year, like we used to be, okay? And also, you recommend, but it's not, the board decided, we approved. Okay, let's make it clear, we approved. If we have different opinions, we ask your opinion and you help us make adjustments and then recommended and approved. If you definitely disagree with that, please stay sober, okay? Please do not say, just say, you know, in the future, anything goes wrong, just say, okay, board approved it.
I agree. Our recommendation, so let's move on.
Another thing, another thing is contingency fund. Well, they follow the civil code, okay? At this point, there's no civil code, there's no guarantee what, who's going to spend it, and we can spend anything, anytime, and anyone, anybody wants, based on recommendation of the VMS. And if the board doesn't understand what that, what the impact of that, you know, maybe in five years' future, the board is different, they will spend. So we, we need to make sure that they follow the civil code, okay?
Okay, Andre. This has nothing to do with today. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so please, what's the alternative analysis of, and the future plan of contingency fund?
Thank you. Finance meeting, thank you. Okay. Is there anything else for today? Okay. Yes.
Manny in the chat.
DeGraeder?
Thank you. I have a couple of things, and I'd like to take them in order. Betty, the savings that you projected, does that take into account the 15-year, instead of the 10-year paint program?
Betty, you're muted. Betty, you're muted.
The surplus I'm talking about right now is just operating. The paint program is in your reserves. And so, yes, you have made a change to your paint program that will result in additional saving in your reserve fund. And so, no, I'm only talking about the operating side of it.
So maybe we have, you suggested contributing less to the reserve funds. With the amount that you're suggesting to contribute less, would that be equal to the amount we would be saving from the paint program? So would it result to a net zero, if you will? Would it go out?
No, I didn't tie it into the paint program savings. Jose Campos is listening, and I'm going to ask him if he knows how much the annual savings is in changing the paint program compared to what's in the budget.
I don't have that information. Ernesto had that information that he was providing earlier. I can tell you that the budget does assume a 10-year paint program, of course. And, you know, the board has elected to go to a 15-year paint program, so there are definitely some savings coming there.
Carl, do you know what the savings are?
I don't remember what the savings are, but I don't think it adds up to $700,000 a year, okay? I don't think so, especially the first.
Yeah, if I may, Sue.
First year right now is.
Thank you, Ernesto.
Okay, do mine.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm still eavesdropping on my phone. We calc, we calculated the savings approximately close to $400,000 from going from the 10-year to a 15-year cycle.
But that's over 15 years.
Uh, no, 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 that's, that's annually, annually, so.
It's a year, it's a year.
Yeah, annually, we're expecting to save from $300,000 to $400,000.
So my comment, so my comment, the reason why I raised that was, that should be calculated to how much less we would have to put into reserves to maintain it the way it is now. So that's item one. So now I'd like to raise another issue. And listen to what's happening. I may be wrong, but it sounds like we're looking at this short term and not looking at the long term. By that, I mean, there was a table that was shown. And it showed that in, not next year, but in subsequent years, the amount of increase to reserves was something like in '22, it would go up $15, and then '23, and that's per month. And then it would jump to, wow, almost $30 a month, per month, in subsequent years. So what I'm asking is, should we not be coming up with plans that look at that? Because if we don't keep our reserves up to, let's say we, we reduce it by $10 per month, the following years, we're going to have those giant increases I just talked about. And then you may have to replace the $10 again. So you may have these giant increases. So here's my overall suggestion. First of all, I think that what we should do is we should determine how much insurance we can, we want, and how much we can afford. We make a mistake by saying this year, we're going to cover it for everybody, there'll be no increases. But come next year, what are we going to do then? We're going to have the same discussions. I think you have to budget each year a certain amount for insurance. It is, it is going to go up, and there's no, we have no control over it. That is my suggestion. Because suddenly next year, everybody's going to look back at this year. If we make no changes, you're going to say, well, you covered us last year. How come you're doing the big jump this year? That is my strongest suggestion, that we have an overall strategic plan for multiple years, not just deal with this year. One other thought. In this regard, strategic planning, we have a strategic planning meeting or committee, a new one. We're going to have to look at new sources of revenue other than what we ask our residents to come forth with, other than cutting services. And I encourage a lot of people to attend those strategic planning meetings, it's a GRF one, and start thinking about ideas. It does not have to be selling land, it does not have to be building new buildings. But there are things that are going to be discussed, and we ought to come up with these things. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Manny?
Thank you, Sue. I just want to point out one thing, and that's that the schedule that's in here about reserves as far as the assessment and the expenditures and so on, that has been changing. That's not what was in last year's business plan, okay? In last year's business plan, it had expenditures of $12.9, almost $13 million. This one shows 11. It had a reserve balance of about $15.5 million, now we've got it in the $19 million. So this is forecasting where we think we're going to be at December 31st, 2020. The point I want to make is that right now, I don't think anything is far to the assessment and all that, unless we want to reduce it for insurance. Because at the end of next year, once the year is over, we will know where we are. And at, at that point in time, we decide that, yeah, we want more funded in the contingency fund. The board can authorize transferring some of the regular reserve fund into that contingency fund. We'll know where we are then. It's not that far away. We're talking about six months from now. So that's why I recommend regarding that. Now, the other point that I mentioned earlier, a couple of months ago, was I thought that we should credit the contingency fund and charge operating fund for all the electricity that's been generated by the solar panel project. Because that, that's who funded it, the contingency fund funded that project. And I've heard statements at prior directors' meeting that that money should be paid back. Well, the source for paying it back is the electricity credits generated. And that seemed to have dropped through the hole somehow. Because I thought we had agreed we were going to do that. The other thing we don't know in here is that we also agreed that some of these expenses were going to be reclassified. So we haven't seen those entries made yet, and we're not sure exactly how that's going to happen. And for the balance of the year, we had agreed certain items are going to be paid out of reserve funds rather than contingency now. So that's why I'm saying, leave it alone for now. And the only thing I'm recommending is to reduce a regular assessment for reserve expenditures to offset this increase in insurance. Because my understanding right now is we agreed to participate at the $425 million, which is fine. And then we'll take another look at it next year. Is that correct, where we are with insurance right now?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's my recommendation.
Not for January. We are hoping to get out of this deal by January. We are working hard to get out of this.
Yeah, that's my point, Sue. If you'd attended the meeting that Cash had with the representative from Hub, you, you're known that he said it's going to take you about six months to be in that position. That's what he.
I, I'm not, I'm not shocked by that.
Okay, we came back to this, so, okay? My recommendation, we're, we're going to have at least $4 million savings in reserve expenditures. And that money is not going to be spent, okay? If we reduce the SSM, the regular assessment, do you approve this? If we reduce the S. Smith, the regular assessment, do you approve this transfer for about twenty dollars? That's only gonna reduce, uh, the contribution to reserve funds by about one point six million dollars. So, we're starting to play the surplus, and that'll help the residents. Instead of paying thirty-nine dollars extra a month for insurance, it'll reduce down to not as much, as little like last year, but not a great big increase. So, that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, let me see here.
Can I, can I respond to a couple of those, Sue?
Yes, certainly, go ahead, please, Betty.
Um, I just wanna make sure everybody's clear that we, you cannot transfer money from the reserve account to the contingency fund. Civil Code prohibits that. The money has to be used for the purpose it was collected, so that's the restriction. When you put money into the reserve fund, it has to go for those components. It can't not be moved out. It can be spent, where you can reduce your contribution, um, but we cannot do a transfer to contingency, um...
Okay, thank you, Betty, you're, you're correct. I mean, let me just have this comment. Uh, in our earlier meetings, we had talked about any surplus in, uh, operating funds going to the contingency fund. We could do that, couldn't we?
Yeah, but we don't have any, and that's what we just...
I'm saying, well, if you're the year, we'll know where we are. So, that's the other alternative we could use.
Well, we, we just went over that, so I can go over it again, if you like, but my recommendation was to leave it in operations to cover the additional cost of insurance, um, and not transfer it to contingency. Um, but then also, the expenses that are being reclassed from the contingency fund will show up on the October financials. Um, so, so some of those expenditures are being transferred from contingency fund to reserve, because they qualify as reserve expenditures, and we did anticipate that in the projection.
Okay, Cash?
So, um, my question was, to the insurance charge you put up with you, three point five million that is in October is already taken care of? Uh, because if you're asking for ten dollars per manner per month, that comes to like, six hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yes, from a cash perspective, that payment's already being made. The, we're actually having to pay it by wire today, because we are not able to generate any checks right now while the system is down. And so, um, from a cash flow perspective, yes, that, that payment is being made now. But it will hit your income statement as it's earned, if you will, at that expense. Um...
Okay, that's ten. Ten dollars per month, manner per month, won't accumulate enough to get up to that level.
Well, there's two interesting, you're talking about cash in the bank versus, um, assessments. Um, and so, don't worry about the three million dollars, that's just the cash entry. But when I showed up, uh, and I can bring it up again, when I, um, showed you this spreadsheet...
Okay, so basically, what I'm concerned is, by year twenty twenty-four, we won't be more, we will be more than twenty point eight percent in the hole. And the ten point six nine three will be in jeopardy with only ten dollars manner per month won't bring it up to that level. How do you base that?
Okay, so let's do one at a time, because I think you just touched on all of our schedules. So, let me just review this. Um, this is the cash payment column. It's highlighted in green here, so these are the cash payments that are being made. But it's going to be amortized over all twelve months of the premium, right? And so, these are the costs each month that you're gonna see in your financials as an expense. And we compared that monthly expense to the budget to see, um, you're short in your budget by six hundred thousand dollars. So, that's why we're recommending leaving your operating surplus in operations because of six hundred thousand dollars. Um, you don't have to worry about the cash side of it, you have money in your bank. Um, we didn't reinvest some of your, um, short-term treasuries, so cash-wise, that money's available.
And, uh, yeah, I understand then that we won't go below ten million six.
And then back on reserves, which is not the contingency fund, but back on the reserve schedule, um, your current plan keeps you above ten point six million. Um, but if you're looking for some offset, um, the, the, I was suggesting that you move ten dollars from your reserve contribution here over to your contingency fund so that you can leave the surplus in operating for your added insurance cost. Um, that's just one scenario. The third is doing it differently. Third is moving all their surplus to contingency fund and paying for any unbudgeted insurance out of the contingency fund. That, that's an option too. Um, but I was trying to follow the, the directions you guys were going in the past. Um, so, yes, you'll hit this red area a little sooner if you reduce it by ten dollars, except that, as Sue mentioned, we've not yet factored in the recent change, um, to a fifteen-year paint program. So, I, I'm comfortable with the ten-dollar reduction. You are gonna have increases in future years, um, in your assessment. You can see the reserve contributions here, the reserve specialist is anticipating those to go up, um, because your expenditures are going up here. You've got some big spenders, seventeen million, sixteen million, seventeen million, seventeen million. Each year, the board is gonna review your programs, and based on recognition, and we see, make adjustments to. But right now, your plan is to spend around seventeen million dollars a year. And so, that's gonna draw down your, your reserve. That's how you're going from the eighteen and nineteen million down to ten.
Okay, thank you for your explanation. And along with Carl's statement, I think you were part of it, and I liked your suggestion. Thank you.
Okay, Andre?
Yes, uh, could you give us some, uh, list as far as where, what are the, how, how do we, can we tell the, our members about the five million and six million dollar savings this year so far? Can you provide a list that we can share with, uh, uh, members? Because that's their concern.
Yes, in the monthly financials, there's a programs report, and you can see by program how much has been saved this year during the shutdown. That money stays in reserve, um, and so, we, we can just call attention to that. But it's an existing schedule. And then one more thing, um...
In the reserve program, I asked, we have a contribution from next year. This year, we have, uh, saving, as far as I heard from Ernesto, we are not going to re- require extra resources to do the job. We just start, stop it, uh, you know, earlier, and then restart from the, from any time sooner, sooner. So, there shouldn't be any need for putting more money in the reserve, because the reserve is not used.
We're, we're not suggesting putting more money in reserve, we're putting, suggesting putting more money in contingency.
Does five, six million dollars in contingency?
No, that's reserved.
That's, that's my question, where do the...
Okay, Andre, we can't take it out, it stays there.
No, no, no. Well, we agree to occupancy agreements. The five, six million dollars need to be accounted in the future budget. So, where do they go? Wh- which budget gets that extra five, six million dollars? And why do we have an extra five, six million dollars in those budget? We are not getting re- extra resources or extra work done.
Okay, Andre, Andre, to me for a second. The work has to be done eventually. So, it is, the money has to be allocated for it, because eventually, we have to do the work. And we can't take the money out of the reserves, it has to stay in the reserves. All we can do is stop putting more money in the reserves. That's the only way we can do.
Not, but that's not what Ernesto said. I asked specifically, do they need extra resources to do the work? They said, no, it's...
It has nothing to do with what we're discussing right now. He's not, we, we still have that work planned, it will get done. When it gets done, we will pay for it. Thank you. Um, okay.
Hold on, hold on, my question is, we have people, we didn't have the, the people left there. So...
Andre, it's time to... Andre, come on, give us a break.
If, if the people, the money will have to be used for those jobs eventually. And we are now being nice to the people and not making them. We would've had to go up on our reserve contribution if we didn't have this money.
Show us the list, show us the list.
I will show you the list, thank you.
I want a VMS, show me the list.
They will show you in the next financial report, we'll put a slide together for you. Okay. Um...
Sue, I had one more question you wanted me to address at this meeting.
Right, right.
As far as what's the potential impact to the residents for, um, their insurance, property insurance increase? Because it's not in the basic assessment, right? We're talking about, right now, no change in the basic assessment, and, um, but they will see any change related to the property tax, which is a straight pass-through from the Orange County Tax Assessor, and the property insurance. And so, I have just a slide here, I will switch over to...
You can see it pretty clearly, Betty, you're branching out.
Yeah, I know, sorry, I am trying to get this, I'm trying to remember how to run this without having access to my little button down there. Um...
It's, it's clear enough, go ahead, talk.
Clear enough, okay, there you go. So, the property insurance assessment, uh, the, the insurance premium is two point eight eight million dollars. And so, we anticipate that monthly assessment will range between six dollars and seventy-two dollars, um, per manner per month. And this is an increase ranging from four to fifty-two dollars per month, per month. So, the average increase is about twenty-five dollars per month. But everyone's unit is unique, and I, you know, so I can't give unit-specific amounts, but the average increase will be twenty-five dollars, ranging from four to fifty-two. So, when you get your assessment letter, your basic assessment, no change. All the things that you share in equally, uh, right now, you have no increase in that assessment. But when it gets down to your individual property tax and your property insurance, the property insurance line will show an increase for the insurance, um, somewhere between four and fifty-two dollars per unit per month, um, the average being twenty-five.
Okay. Elsie?
Thanks, I was just copying, because we don't have these, right? No, we don't have these. Uh, eventually, we'll get them. So, thank you, uh, but what I was gonna ask, Betty, um, I'm sorry, this goes way back, but, um, everybody else had so many things to say. Uh, I just wanted to verify that this year, we're, we believe there'll be a four million dollar, uh, wait, a, a, yeah, a four million dollar savings, uh, from COVID, approximately. And of that, seven hundred thousand was operations, and the, the rest of it was, uh, reserves, is that correct?
Jose, did you ever confirm my number? Is it seven hundred thousand we're still anticipating for operating surplus?
Yes, that's correct, we're still anticipating seven hundred thousand dollars from operating and, and about four million dollars in total.
Okay, oh, anyway, so, so the rest of that's, uh, reserve savings then? Or not savings, but you know what I mean? Okay, thank you very much, you guys, I, the, everything else said just fine, but I just had to confirm those numbers. I wasn't sure if I wrote them down right, thank you.
Okay, Cash? Painting?
Thank you, Sue, uh, the, the last chart you put up there, the thirty-eight dollars converts to the two million eight eight one. Um, where's the seventy-two number come from, just twice thirty-eight?
Well, property, property insurance is a calculation that's, um, unique to the, um, unit. And so, we don't have access to our systems right now, but Jose was kind enough to go to a, um, a file that we had that listed all of the existing, um, property insurance amounts, um, per unit per month. And so, we estimated the increase based on the, the higher insurance cost.
So, right now, we do have a line on the property statement you sent us for insurance.
Yes, so you get your, um, your basic assessment, and then below that are two lines, property insurance and property tax.
And that number was same for everybody, not for...
Property insurance and property tax will be different for everybody, based on your individual scenarios with market rates and original par values and so forth.
No, that should, that insurance number should be same for everybody. No.
No, it, it's not, it's based on original par values. It's always been, um, allocated, uh, according to some original requirements in your governing documents. And, um, it's not a periodic per unit per month like utilities.
So, your property value is high, your insurance will be high as well. So, what do you say?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Andre, what do you wanna talk about the future? Please, just do a quick, two-minute talk, if you wanna talk about the future. And then we're gonna try to close this meeting out.
Sure, I'm not sure what the question, I wasn't prepared to present the future, I don't, I don't understand the question.
But everybody else gets to talk about the future direction, so I'm not allowed. What do you want, what did you wanna talk about?
Okay, uh, the future direction is that, uh, 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 reserve fund ought to be too much detail. Uh, please give us a summary into categories, not just, not sit on the details, okay? Uh, you recommend, uh, not the board, uh, I, I would say, all the decisions, please make it clear that you recommend, not the board to decide. Please don't say that board decides to go this direction. We approve this direction, we make the direction change, and we ask you to provide a different alternative analysis. So, it's not board decided, it's you recommend, and we give the direction.
I'm responsible for that, Andre.
Okay.
They are recommended.
I wanna advertise on that. Okay, the third question was Civil Code, okay, uh, about Civil Code, contingency fund. The way it is, because it has no Civil Code, doesn't follow Civil Code, that's why it's abused, okay? We want to make sure that the contingency fund is following the Civil Code. And also, the write-off clause is missing, I don't know what happened to it. Please, uh, uh, share with us on that. I wanna know what's the impact of, uh, uh, moving ten dollars from, uh, uh, reserve contribution to contingency fund? And what about the future plan? Does that mean we're gonna, you, you initially have the zero dollar, one, two, three, four dollars? Now, we put ten dollars, what's the future plan of that? And what is the alternative analysis you want us to give us, uh, some, uh, information? And so that we can approve that? I will emphasize on, we need to, uh, more information, alternative, approve that. We don't wanna come up with a, a procedure that you follow. We want you to provide the procedure that we approve that. So, please, uh, provide that kind of information, what is the alternative analysis? And what about the contingency fund, uh, uh, in the future? Uh, we don't have that...
Three alternatives, uh, already. There was the ten, zero, ten, and twenty, and she recommends the ten, so I...
I know, this, this year, I'm talking about the future.
Oh, okay, bye.
We don't have it, we, we have, we can do the, uh, current one, but we don't wanna argue every year about, you know, how much we need to put in there. Let's set a plan and see if we can follow them.
All right.
So, honestly, let me clarify a couple of things. The contingency fund is not governed by Civil Code. It is not governed by Civil Code. It is not subject to anything in Civil Code.
Why is that?
It is, it could be a line item in your operating budget. A lot of smaller HOAs have a line in the operating budget called contingencies, or unforeseen items, that come up in operations. Um, but because of your size, you put it aside into, uh, an account, right, a fund. And you call it a contingency fund, and it's really not restricted as to use. The only restriction is it requires a board appropriation to spend that money. But it is available at the board's discretion when the board needs to use it. You don't decide in advance how to use that fund. Um, there's an example of potential uses listed, but it's not restricted, and it's not governed by Civil Code.
So, it's digestive fund and the write-off, the other two purposes also not following Civil Code.
That, that has nothing to do with what we have to decide today, so let's move on. Thank you for your input. Okay, uh, Carol?
The, the question I have right now is, everything's follow, not following Civil Code, that's the problem. I agree that contingency fund doesn't...
Please, thank you. Carol, please go ahead.
So, just for my own edification, I'm gonna share it with the board...
So just for my own edification, and I'm gonna share it with the board, and it may or may not be information you may or may not want, okay? I, my HO six policy is coming up in December, so I went to my agent to find out whether or not this truly increases with regard to HO six policies. And right now, I will be seeing when I re-up at this, if I re-up today, okay, but my policy ends December thirtieth, it would be a two hundred and fifty dollar increase from what I was paying last year. Now, at this particular point in time, that includes now this year, which they weren't doing before. Allstate now has the hundred thousand dollar loss assessment, which we've been talking about. They did not have that before. They capped out at fifty thousand dollars. And they're also finding out, and I don't know what other insurance companies have, that they need to go with a twenty-four month additional living expense issue because they're finding out people are staying outside their houses when it's being repaired from a fire or what have you. It's costing them two years of their life. So that's why they have that in the particular policy. And that particular point is only gonna cost me nine dollars a year. So I'm just saying right now, on an individual basis, my HO six policy, based on what we're seeing in California right now, if I was to re-up today, it's two hundred and fifty-five dollar increase from what it was last year. That's all. Information for you.
Thank you. Okay, Manuel?
Wait, how much was it last year? I mean, how much was it before the two hundred and fifty dollar increase, Carl?
Four hundred and forty-two dollars.
Oh, okay, cause mine's running three seventy-five with a fifty.
I'd like to make a motion to go with the budget we had all along, that we approved last time, with the exception that we also approve a twenty-five dollar reduction in our reserve contribution to offset the increase in insurance, uh, assessment to all the members. It's gonna range like Betty said, from four dollars to, to a master's number, and it's gonna average an increase of twenty-six dollars. So we've got plenty of reserves. So I move that we reduce the assessment for next year for contributions to assessments by twenty-five dollars per month. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
The reserve funds right now, at this particular point in time, is work that's going to get done, whether it gets done next year or the year after. At this particular point in time, it will get done. If next year, we find out we really have a lot more money in the bank, if you will, okay? Then we can do it at that particular point in time. But there's so many imponderables at this particular point in time. And I don't think that our reserve fund should be reduced because this is work that still needs to get done. It may not, it may not have gotten done this year because of the pandemic, but it will get done because it's in there based on budgets that were set aside for. That's what I have to say. So I'm gonna vote no.
Elsie?
I, uh, just pretty much echo what, uh, Paul said. We just went through the, uh, our staff just went through the comparisons of, uh, leaving it the way it is, reducing it by ten, reducing it by twenty, and reducing it by twenty took it to what, in your opinion, and mine, reduced it to a dangerously close, uh, a dangerous, dangerously low amount within the next year or two. And, uh, twenty-five dollars is even more than that. So much as I respect, uh, my, my colleague, uh, Director Armandares, I'm gonna have to vote no on this because of that amendment.
Okay, Eddie? Uh, let's see. We've got Andre?
Yes, uh, I like the idea of twenty-five dollar cut, okay? But my question is, where do we cut? We're not playing number games, just twenty-five, no reason. There has to be, come from somewhere that cuts this number, right? So I don't know what to vote for. I, I, I vote no, not because I disagree with the twenty-five dollars, but I disagree that there is no detail to share. And when we vote on this one, there's no detail, there's nothing we can do. We, we, it's, it's not, uh, fiduciary responsibility to know what are we voting for, right? Thank you.
Um, okay, the next one is Cash?
Uh, you know, I don't fully agree with Manuel's philosophy here. I think we have a better proposal, uh, from Betty, and I will vote no on this twenty-five dollar movement. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna do a roll call now. Brian?
Excuse me, Sue, you didn't consult the chat box.
Well, I did consult the chat box, but I, I, we're doing a roll, okay, go ahead, Dick.
This really, uh, is a pertinent, several pertinent comments. First of all, there are people who come into this village, and when they come in, they look at your, the, the, or, or any condo, or any village, or whatever. They will look at the financial stability of the village. And what that means is they will look at, uh, what we were talking about, to go below that ten million dollar line. So this, uh, taking twenty dollars away for out of reserves is really dangerous. The other, it, it could affect your sales. The second point is, again, this is, it appears that you're looking at this from a short-term concept, what we're gonna do this year. Wait, I'm not, wait, I need to talk, I really have to get this across. I, I would like to get this across. You're talking about what you're gonna do this year, but what are you going to do in subsequent years? You can't keep borrowing from reserves. So you're not addressing the real problem. The real problem is there's gonna be a constant shortfall of money with regard to insurances, and you need to address that by raising the assessments in some way and use some of the savings that you've got, like the three hundred and eighty-five thousand from paint, et cetera. Those are my comments.
Thank you.
Yeah, my, my comment is, we've been watching reserve funds. We've been examining them. Manny and I have been reviewing the check request. There are lots of gaps in places, I think, that maybe they won't materialize in actual savings to this level. But my point is, is that the way things are practiced now, I think there's a certain amount of opportunity to save some money there. And that's why I support this amendment. Because when you look at the estimates on the quotes and the invoices that come in, there's a lot of mismatches there that, that I think we could see some savings.
Good. Razor?
Uh, I support it also. Thank you.
Neta?
I agree with Andre, we need more detail. I voted no.
Six no's, one, two, three, three yeses and one person absent. It does not pass. I have a motion on the floor to accept Betty's, um, thank you, Elsie.
Can I restate the recommendation?
Yeah, I, I move that we accept staff's recommendation to approve the current budget as a, as approved before.
That wasn't my recommendation. So Elsie, let me just rephrase my recommendation in case that, um, a motion. My recommendation was to reduce the contribution to reserve fund by ten dollars per manner per month and add that ten dollars to the contingency fund as a contribution.
I apologize, and I want to re, I want to restate my, uh, motion, uh, to conform with, uh, to re, to take ten dollars out of reserves and put it into contingency. Is that correct, Betty? What, okay, sorry about that. That's what I moved.
Is there a second? I second it. Okay, Cash, second. Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote.
No, I don't have the justification and I don't have the detail. I cannot have vote for that.
Yes.
Brian?
No.
No.
Yes. Manuel?
No.
Neta?
Yes.
Cash? Sue, yes. One, two, three, four, five, five yeses. One, two, three, four, four no's and one person absent. It's passed. That's all we had to do today, so I, I...
Person missing. There's, there should be eleven votes.
Anthony, Anthony's missing. Oh, wait a second. I, you said, you're right.
Well, Anita's not here anymore, so there's only ten of us.
There's only ten of us and there's ten votes, and that's what I've got. It passes, and I, we're done for today. Oh, wait, I have another meeting to get to. Yes, Elsie?
I, I, this will be a quick question for Betty now, or for you too. Before, as I understood it, we were gonna, uh, take, when we reclassified the money, uh, the, the money that we spent on, uh, uh, rain damage, water intrusion events, we were gonna, and we had been paying for that out of contingency, and we decided that that should be reclassified to, uh, reserve. And, uh, I saw that we were gonna, I, I thought we were gonna transfer some money from reserves in the contingency, but of, of that, in that same amount. So for operations in the contingency, representing that same amount, that, so we never did that? Or we don't have to unvote that or anything? You know what I'm talking about, Betty? The five hundred and some thousand?
And you did approve that for this year, and we're reflecting that on your October financials.
So that's still going into contingency?
Um, the restoration piece is being reclassed to reserve, but the dry-down services will continue to be paid from contingency this year, and then they will come out of, um, operations this year.
I thought there was a chunk of money that we reclassified that, that represented the reserve part, uh, you know, that should properly have been charged to reserves and was instead charged to operating.
That happens this month, so you don't see it on your financials yet. You'll see it on the October financials.
But is there a chunk going into contingency? Like a, kind of like saying, okay, we, you paid for this and we should have paid for it someplace else.
Instead of, um, I'll look back on my, uh, file here. But instead of, you know, like one and a half million dollars coming out of contingency fund this year, we lowered it down, the projection down to nine hundred thousand.
Right, no, I got that part, but I thought there was gonna be five hundred and some thousand dollars transferred.
There's been a, uh, transfer of that already.
Okay, so, okay, because then when you said this time, uh, we should not transfer money into contingency, instead we should...
Okay, so that's a good point. So Sue, we should have another motion that says to leave the operating surplus in operations to cover the unbudgeted insurance cost.
Okay.
You want to make that motion, Elsie?
Uh...
I think that's what you're trying to...
Enough for me to explain it. Could you please say it and then I'll repeat it?
Um, one of your earlier decisions was to leave the operating surplus, or one of my earlier recommendations was to leave your operating surplus in operations because it will be sufficient, we anticipate it will be sufficient to cover the unbudgeted pro, insurance expense, the non-property insurance expense. That was on one of the earlier slides.
Okay, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, we'll take a vote.
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Elsie?
Elsie, yes. Neta?
Yes.
Andre?
Yes.
Cash? Yes. Sue, yes. And I guess Manny has left us, so we ha, it passes, and there's one extension. Okay. Uh, there is no update as yet for, uh, the situation. There will be a later this afternoon, and I will disseminate what information I get this, later this afternoon on the malware. And I will, the meeting is adjourned. I have another meeting to go to. Thank you.
Question. There's a talk about the president meeting. There's a lot of discussion on the, on the VMS board about, uh, president meeting, a lot of information that we don't know.
I have disseminated as much information as I have, and I will disseminate whatever I get this afternoon to all of you. Thank you.
Could you please, uh, disseminate officially rather than...